Good evening and thank you for joining us. I am Kevin Haggerty, President of the League of Women Voters of Marin County. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan membership organization that encourages, informs, and active participation in government. We promote voter education and advocate for issues, but never endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. During election years, it is our mission to educate voters about candidates and ballot issues so that they can make informed choices when they mark their ballots. Moderating candidate forums is an important part of this work. And now I'm pleased to hand over the reins to this evening's moderator, League member Susan Clark.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm Susan Clark, and I'm delighted to be your moderator this evening. We really appreciate you joining us for this candidate forum, and thank you to all the community members who submitted questions. We've tried to include as many as we can with the time allowed. The Board of Supervisors is Marin's governing body and passes all county ordinances. They set priorities for county funds, services, and property based on their understanding of residents' needs. Tonight's forum is for candidates for Board of Supervisors, District Two. With me tonight are Elaine Biajini, our timekeeper, DeeDee Butori, and Sue Ream on Zoom support. And we're really happy to have Annabelle Garay and Karina Iniegas, who are providing Spanish language interpretation. A reminder, all of the candidates have agreed to participate under the ground rules set for this forum. And the forum is being simulcast on Marin TV Channel 30, facilitated through the League's partnership with the Community Media Center of Marin. It's being recorded and will also be available through our website at MarinLWV.org. And the forum will be rebroadcast on Marin TV Channel 30 with days and times posted on our website. Candidates have agreed to adhere to specific times for their opening and closing remarks and while responding to questions. And we have all four candidates who are running for the Board of Supervisors, District Two seat with us tonight. Brian Colbert, Heather McPhail Schreiderin, Ryan O'Neill, and Gabe Paulson. The candidates are invited to make a two-minute opening statement. After that, they will each have one minute to answer each of the list of questions we hope to go through tonight. And to be fair, the order will rotate. So for opening statements, we will begin with Ryan O'Neill.
Hi. I'd first like to just start my opening statement by saying that I know that the League of Women Voters was born during days where women weren't even allowed to vote. I grew up with very strong women in my family. To start off with my mom, Carol O'Neill, who led the way in some Corder Medera issues. My aunt, my friend Anne Charles, who ran against Bill Philante in the Assembly, had us out there holding signs for her. And my recently passed godmother, Kay Coleman, was a force in San Anselmo, a 25-year volunteer. And it means a lot to follow in the footsteps of very strong women. This election marks an opportunity to bring fresh thinking and new leadership to the challenges posed by climate change, state mandates on affordable housing, homelessness, and the social and economic fallout from the pandemic. Working together with shared courage, determination, and commitment to our future, we can protect what we love about living here with strategies based on transparency, fiscal responsibility, consensus, and compassion. Our Marin community values are rooted in our beauty of our environment, and I'm driven to preserve these priceless inheritance for our children. I grew up on Ring Mountain, Corder Medera. I attended public schools. I served as a Fairfax Town Councilman. I currently serve on the Ross Valley School Board, which I'm late to a meeting for as a two-term trustee. I got my Eagle Scout in Larkspur, and I learned early lessons in leadership through these areas. I've dedicated my years of service to the youth of our communities as a baseball coach in West Marin Little League and Branson High School Baseball. I've run a business for 30 years, engaged in public service, and volunteered in our community. And I know that every problem comes with a pathway to its solution, and I'll make sure that everyone is heard and respected. And then I'll take the lead in tackling the important challenges facing us today. Let's work together, solve the problems, and make our communities thrive. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. Next opening statement will be Heather McPhail Schrederin.
Great. Thank you for providing this time for us to get together and for everything you do year-round to educate and empower Marin residents to fully participate in our democracy. My name is Heather McPhail Schrederin, and I was born in Marin General Hospital, grew up in Santa Rafael, and currently live in Kentfield with my husband and four kids. For the past 35-plus years, I have dedicated myself to public service leadership in Marin and our broader community. From being elected student body president at Marin Catholic, to serving in the student government at UC Berkeley, and to being elected president to represent graduate students at Oxford University. For the past 20-plus years, I have held executive positions in both the corporate and public sector in business development and strategy. I am also a local business owner and serve on the Board of Directors of McPhail Fuel, an independent business that's been family-owned since inception and rigorously committed to strengthening the communities in Marin and the North Bay since 1884. Most recently, I was elected to serve nine years on the Kentfield School District Board while raising my four kids. As president of the Kentfield School Board during the pandemic, I led the engagement with parents, teachers, administrators, and our greater community. The KSD became a model for how schools could reopen safely and quickly while consistently maintaining a balanced budget. During my tenure, Beatty and Kent consistently scored among the top schools in the state. The KSD budget was always recognized by the county and state as exemplary, given that it was continually balanced with strong reserves and responsible fiscal oversight. In 2017, I was awarded Marin Young Woman of the Year by the Marin Women's Political Action Committee. Apart from the KSD Board, I currently serve as Chair of the Kentfield Safe Roots to School Program, President of the Kentfield Green Bay Historical Society, Representative of the Citizens Oversight Committee of the Transportation Authority of Marin, and Member of the Community Advisory Group for the Project Home Key Initiative in Larkspur. I look forward to learning more about the issues you care about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. The next opening statement will be from Brian Colbert.
Yeah, good evening, and thanks to the League of Women Voters and everybody who's joined tonight. My parents, and like myself, we were not born here in Marin. I was born in Connecticut in a small town outside of New York City. I attended Oberlin College, where I have a degree in political science and a degree in acting. Tended the University of Chicago, where I have a law degree and a master's in public policy. I practiced law in New York City before I moved over to the business side and pursued some entrepreneurial ventures in both Chocolate and Voip in Southern California. And about 2003, my wife, at that time my girlfriend, moved to Turkey for three and a half years, where I taught political theory and political science at a private university. In 2007, we moved back to the Bay Area. It was there that I began wearing my now infamous Hawaiian shirts. It was because people never thought I was actually an entrepreneur, but rather security. Little did I know, 10 years later, I would be the first elected African-American official in Marin. In 2013, I moved here with my wife and my daughter, now 13. I joined the San Anselmo Council in 2017. Ran again in 2020, serving one term as mayor. I currently manage a couple of high-touch medical practices in San Francisco, managing all the business operations. As I mentioned earlier, I've been elected to San Anselmo Council twice. And I've also had a pretty high level of engagement and solution solving outside of San Anselmo, also in the Ross Valley. I'm currently the Chair of the Transportation Authority of Marin, where I've served since 2017. I'm the President of Marin Transit, and I'm the former President of the Marin Council of Mayor and Council Members, which is all the town councils from all around Marin. Get ready. San Anselmo right now is a thriving community. During COVID, I focused on community vitality and community cohesion. I spearheaded the creation of new parklets, closing our streets, and the new community park, which was focused on presenting a gathering space when we most needed it. My three priorities are wildfire prevention, focused on housing, and improving infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And the fourth and final opening statement will be from Gabe Paulson.
Great. Thank you, Susan. And I want to echo what Ryan said, thanking the League of Women Voters. I've used your voter guides for 30 years now, and I really appreciate you inviting me. So my name is Gabe Paulson, and I've served as Larkspur's mayor last year and have been on the council since 2019. I've worked in Marin for about 25 years, and I've volunteered almost every one of those years. I'm a UC Berkeley and a Princeton graduate. I have two degrees in physics. And I'm the founder and CEO of a tech company that's created about 30 jobs in the Bay Area. I also have a wonderful wife, a six-year-old, and a two-year-old, and Marin is a place we call home. I really want Marin to be the best possible home for everyone, and I really deeply care about this community. I'm here tonight because I do think I have a vision and the necessary experience to deal with our greatest challenges. Tonight, I don't want to simply list issues or give you answers that you can find in the newspaper. I'm going to be specific about solutions so that you know what you're voting for. So a couple of topics. First is housing. I spent my entire mayor year finding suitable locations and design standards. I'm also the one candidate here who put a measure on the ballot to protect renters while keeping landlords in business. For fire prevention, I was a founding member of the Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency, and I've actively looked for ways to keep your homes insured. I helped with the purchase of an evacuation system that'll save lives, and I'm very much into the modeling and measuring. I also have been on the flood zone board and have thought deeply about this issue and have a seven-point plan to restart our conversation. Finally, no one here is really talking enough about Health and Human Services. A third of our county budget is dedicated, so I've got a group of experts to develop a roadmap I'd like to share with you. I love Marin. It's my home. It's your home, and I'm optimistic and looking forward to sharing my vision tonight and learning more. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. Now we're going to proceed to questions, and the candidates will have one minute each to respond. And again, we'll keep rotating the order. And if you just joined us and are interested, we do have Spanish language interpretation. You can access it with the globe icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. First question, as a result of California's new state mandated housing element, Marin County and its municipalities are obligated to build more than 14,000 new housing units by 2031. Housing was also the number-one issue in the recent community survey. Marin is struggling to create housing to comply with the state mandate and to meet the pressing need for housing, including workforce housing. What steps would you recommend to fulfill Marin's housing needs? We'll begin with Heather.
Great. Yes, I think it is our number-one issue, and I'm glad that you referenced that Marin community study because it's clearly the number-one issue, not just of this campaign, I think that you're going to hear us talking about, but also among residents. So I guess to start off with, I think we have to envision what kind of a community we want to live in. I think that's the fundamental question that needs to be asked. And from my perspective, I think we need to pursue a spectrum of housing strategies. And it's particularly focused on what you had mentioned, our workforce, but then also our seniors. I think those two groups in particular need to have the focus. And from the workforce side, I think that we obviously know that a lot of our workers are commuting in, two-thirds to be exact. And on the senior side, we know that by, just in a few years, by 2027, we'll have more people over 60 than under 30 in Marin. So clearly, those two groups need to be the focus. And I think in terms of how we do it and where we do it, there's all kinds of innovative solutions out there. The ones I like in particular are Oak Hill, which is near San Quentin, which is going to be entirely workforce housing, creative collaboration, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I think the question for housing is for whom and where? So I think we need more housing in general, but if you really want to focus on working families and our senior citizens, then I think there's three groups that we really need to focus on. Our first responders, our firefighters, our police officers, and room for teachers. We need to focus on housing for our working families. And then last, we need to sort of focus on for our essential workers who make up the bulk of our community. So I support housing for a variety of all economic levels. The question is where? Well, my family and I moved to Marin because we really value the open space. So I think because of the evacuation problems, we need to locate our housing in our downtown quarters. We want community vitality. That's where we should put it because it means that people don't have to get into their cars, and we can leverage and enhance our public transit systems. So that is where I think how we can solve our housing issues and begin to address them in the short and in the long term.
Thank you. Gabe? You're going to need to unmute yourself?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that there are several things to look at. First is the location. And I'm going to disagree with Brian. I don't think the downtown is the right place. I think we need to put it by the highways. So transit-oriented housing, downtown housing, for example, in San Anselmo would congest all of the Sir Francis Drake, and there really isn't a place to go vertical or have the density. So as mayor, I really push to get things on Marin Mart, where you can go up five, seven stories and get density. A third of our 979 units can go there. So location is key. The other is we need to make it affordable, and we have $5 million that the county uses in $100,000 shots. We need to look how to invest that wisely. Third, we really have to look at accessory dwelling units for the infill, and that's something that has got too much red tape, and I have a way to reduce that. And finally, we need to work together. Arena numbers are very competitive. The Oak Hill project that Heather meant was in competition with Larkspur. We had to clamor for credit for that. We can do arena swaps. There's better ways to work together.
Thank you. And Ryan?
Well, all their answers in some ways are correct. I think it's really important that we talk about the communication of this aspect more than the actual people themselves. I mean, it's obviously that we need workforce housing. It's obviously that we need senior housing. But I think the real thing that we're missing here is we're missing the education to the community as to why. Everybody throws out these terms like affordable housing. Well, most people don't really know what that means. And they certainly don't know who we're talking about making it for. A lot of people are just thinking that, oh, well, affordable housing, that means more people are just going to move into the town. And that's where we're missing out. We're missing out on the communication as to the who they are. And we have to remind them that they're our teachers, they're our policemen, they're our first responders, they're our musicians. They're the people that are driving, like Heather said, through our towns to get here. They're not strangers. They're people that are part of us. They're part of the people who shop with us. And so what I think we're really missing, and I agree with Gabe in regards to we have to look at these numbers regionally because we are topographically challenged and environmentally sensitive challenged in all these areas. But if we need to put these down through the major highways and by the major areas where we can support them with the infrastructure.
Thank you. The next question is, what is your position on rent control in the unincorporated areas of Marin County? And Brian, could you please go first?
Yeah, so we're currently addressing this in San Anselmo, and I think rent control actually is about two different issues. The first is, is there going to be space for new people to move to the county? And I think in general, rent control is a disincentive for landlords. But I have to say, the real problem we have is displacement, and how do we protect our working families and our seniors? So I fully support the county's efforts right now to have a displacement conversation in January. I'm on the record that I think this issue is too big for any elected officials to decide and that needs to go to the community. So I don't believe there's necessarily a one-size-fits-all. So that is my position.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, just to put it in context, rent control is something I've worked on. I've been in the Marin IJ 20 times about this, and the ballot measure D is one I wrote and I'm defending right now. But it's really the last resort. I worked for four years for subsidy. I worked with the MEHT program. I actually achieved a Skylark Fund subsidization. I measured the amount we need to build the safety net. So I'd rather not go to rent control. But really, what it is, is the preservation of affordable housing. Really, what it is, is it's a way to reduce homelessness. So when you get to the homeless question, my first answer is going to be prevent people from getting homeless in the first place. I don't think the county, I think the county has been kicked down the road too long. I would be a very vocal advocate in a moderate form, and I think that there's a way to do this where we can first stall the construction that'll take eight years to meet our arena numbers. So I think we need to put this in the toolbox, but also look at Section 8 and subsidies.
Thank you, Gabe. Ryan?
Sorry. I'm against rent control. I am very much for private property rights. I have watched what's happened here in my small town of Fairfax turn the entire community against each other. And again, you'll hear this a lot from me, but I believe that communication is really the most important aspect to avoiding all of these issues. Most people don't understand what's going on. By the time they do understand what's going on, it's a polarized argument, and they get half of the information and don't do the homework. I believe that the state does protect renters, and I also, I really don't like the way that people have been vilified for trying to age in place. It's an expensive place to live. I believe that taking a position on these things is what leaders have to do. I think putting it to the voters is fine, but I really think it's up to us to, as elected officials, to make these choices and put out what we think. People don't have to agree with us all the time, and that's fine, but I do believe that it's important to take a stand, and I am not for rent control.
Thank you. Heather?
Great. So first off, I do support renter protections as part of an overall housing strategy. I think it's a community asset to have richness and socioeconomic diversity. It's something I appreciated when I grew up here in Marin. And I think at the local jurisdiction level, more effort needs to be done where housing providers and property owners are brought into the conversation. And finally, I just, I did talk to every current supervisor, and it does not seem like there's any appetite at the county level to take on rent control. Where I do think the county could play a really interesting role is with renter protection solutions, be it shallow rent subsidies. And another area that I think that the county could take a more active role is just pathways for homeownership. I think that could be something creative, especially for historically under-resourced communities.
Thank you very much. The next question, how do you view San Anselmo's ballot measure to withdraw the town from Marin County Flood Control and Water Conservation District Flood Control Zone 9? What measures would you endorse to substantially reduce the frequency and severity of flooding throughout the Ross Valley watershed? And first up on that will be Gabe.
Great, thank you. So I believe Measure F is really the voice of the San Anselmo community. It's a way to put an end to a broken process, so I support it. And I also think that the same will probably happen in Larkspur. There's been great disappointment in some of the needs of that community. I think the real question is, how do we move forward? And I've been on the flood zone nine board, and beyond that, I've actually tried to talk to all the experts. I've talked to almost everybody along the river in Ross and the creek, and also in Larkspur. I've come up with a seven-point plan. There isn't time in 60 seconds, but one, I think it might be time to invite the Marin grand jury to look at this, also to put everything on Zoom for transparency. Secondly, we have storm drain plans, a very extensive one in San Anselmo. The funds that we have could immediately be used for that. We had to pass the Measure G to do the same in Larkspur. Finally, we need better coordination with FEMA and especially looking at insurance as a metric.
Thank you. Next, Ryan?
Yeah, I am a strong supporter of yes on F, and I believe that leadership has to understand when things aren't working and find a bailout position. I mean, we have spent $52 million, and what we have to show for it is not very much. A study and a breakdown of a very non-transparent group of people trying to share with the community and some very intelligent people what they've done with the money. And the 2022 breakout of some data showed that at that point, we had spent 72% on staff and consultants, 72% of $52 million on staff and consultants, 14.6% on land, and 12.7% on construction. I mean, at the end of the day, it's okay to come out with some ideas, but once we realize that things are not working, it's up to leadership to pull these plans back, regroup, set a course, be able to say that we made some mistakes, and pivot instead of just continuing down a line. And I believe that it's not just a voice of San Anselmo community. I believe it's a voice of every taxpayer that has to pay these things and doesn't have the results to show for it.
Thank you. Heather?
Yes, I also support Measure F, and I just wanted to make a few comments about this. First of all, a rainy day like we have today, I don't want to suggest that flooding is not an issue. We are very vulnerable to flooding in District Two in particular, and it's going to be exacerbated by sea level rise. So I don't want to suggest that flooding is not an issue, but I do think specifically with Measure F, there's been an erosion of public trust, and I think that's what the ballot measure is about. In terms of where do we go from here, I think we need to hit the pause button and regroup, as I think others suggested, and take the time to do a full financial audit to see where the funds have gone to date, and then restore that public trust by bringing all the parties back to the table and really rethinking what this could look like. I think there's been some very successful collaborations in Marin, especially on the fire side. And I think we could use that as a model to how we could restructure what the new vision for flood zone nine could look like.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, sure. Sure. So the first thing is, look, the flood program has clearly had missteps. It clearly has not met the expectations that people had wanted and has not been a strong steward of taxpayer dollars. I voted against putting Measure F on the ballot, and I would encourage every voter in District Two to read the ballot statement because there's a pretty clear opinion that even if Measure F passes, the taxpayers in San Anselmo will still have to continue to pay the tax till the expiration of the tax fee. So I did not want to go to the voters with something that would not be able to effectuate their will. I thought it was simply symbolic and potentially misleading. The third thing I want to be clear on is I do not support the renewal of the flood fee in 2027. It's not that the flood zone needs to rethink. It needs a complete reimagining, rethinking, a brand-new approach from the bottom up. And while conversation and pulling people together is an interesting thought, people want solutions. And I think you have to sort of address that flooding is not fire, and that while everyone is concerned about fire, downstream incentives may be radically, if not diametrically opposed to upstream incentives.
Thank you. Now, we'd like to hear your thoughts on how you would assess District Two's disaster preparedness. What would you do to increase disaster readiness? And we'll start with Ryan.
Well, I come from a Boy Scout background, and I mean, at the end of the day, when you start this program at like nine, 10 years old, they teach you really quickly, be prepared, and you really only move as fast as the slowest person. And everybody goes collectively together. We are led by amazing leaders with incredible insights, amazing intellect, and they work from a plan. So for me, I have always had in the back of my truck a flare, a map, a light, things that you could run into because it's called preparation. You're going to hear me go back to this a lot, but actually, communication and communicating to people the why this is important for them to understand in real terms is massively important. And we can tell people to clear the brush from around their house, but we have to also teach them that they have to be able to get out, and they should have radios, and their children should know where they're going to go, and their family members should know where they need to be. It's all about communicating why they need to know this stuff and then encouraging them to make sure that they have an action plan when the problems come.
Heather?
Yes, I want to do start with that climate change. It continues to impact us more than any other time in our history right now. And I do think this is a really timely question because I think we're at an urgent crisis point with a lot of these initiatives. If we talk about fire, flood, sea level rise, drought. Sea level rise alone is projected to cost $17 billion in expenses. And that's been a recent report that was presented to the Board of Supervisors. These are serious challenges, and I do think that we are well-positioned in terms of having the right teams in place. We're working collaboratively across the county, but it cannot be understated of how urgent this crisis is and how much we need to tackle it from not just a city approach, not just a county approach, but a really a regional and state approach.
Thank you. Brian, District Two's disaster preparedness.
Yeah, so I sit right now on the Ross Valley Fire Department Board, and as I spoke earlier, this is my number-one priority. Look, we've done a lot for disaster preparedness, particularly focused on fire prevention and suppression with the creation of the Marin Wildlife Prevention Agency. I mean, $20 million is a lot of money. But there's always more work to do in terms of non-aryll education, how we can help our property owners, including homeowners and our commercial property owners where renters live, about how to home harden. We know that homeowners need help and need help right now with home insurance rates. So I think it's important that we, as a county, partner with our friends in Sacramento to figure out how we can get relief. So I think as we approach consolidation and coordination, we need to make sure that our first responders are fully staffed on their engines. We need to make sure that they have the equipment that they need to help protect all our stakeholders and members of the community.
Thank you. Gabe?
Yeah, thanks. I think when it comes to disaster preparedness, my first instinct is to talk about evacuation. So for us, we have flooding, we have earthquakes, we have fire. Evacuation- Evacuation is something I've worked on for four years. I helped purchase the Zone Haven system, which is something that Central Marin Police and Fairfax Police will use to get you out of your home and to save your lives. And going into Cascade Canyon or Madrone Canyon, I'm deeply concerned about no cell coverage there, not enough people who, and I think my biggest concern is people are going to die. So, so really shoring that up would be a first priority as, as county supervisor. And then there's the home hardening element, too. The Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency has done a lot of work. I think that we need to look now at the balance. There's some nuance now. Do we do more vegetation management, or we do more home hardening? And then finally, community is key. I've led 50 meetings for 40 neighborhood response groups, making sure everybody has NICSIL, everybody knows what to do, knowing the older people who may not have phones. It's key that everybody is in on this.
Thank you very much. Next question. And I'm going to remind myself, as well as all of our candidates, to speak slowly because of the interpretation. The Ross Valley School District has initiated an eviction proceeding affecting the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. The center, one of the few subsidized childcare operations in Marin County for low-income families, is on District 2 property inside Deer Park in Fairfax. Can you tell us your best-case scenario to resolve this situation? And please include your thoughts about how we can provide more childcare for young families in Marin. And first, Heather?
Great. And I am very aware of my colleague across here who's a school board member. So I'm going to speak from the perspective of both as a former school board member and then a member of the community. The first thing I want to mention, which you already did say, is the center is, is a subsidized provider of early childhood education. It is the sole subsidized provider in Ross Valley, and it plays a very critical role for working families, and it's also a very big question of equity in our community. And the other really important point to mention is that there's a waiting list of over 1,000 children for subsidized childcare in Marin right now. So it could not be of more critical importance that a solution can be found. And where I rest on this is I am very hopeful that a solution will be found. And I think that we've got the right things in place in terms of, I love the fact that Marin Community Foundation is stepping up, the county is stepping up. I would like to see it being very optimistic that a solution could be found. Secondly, in terms of your second part of the question, oh, I can't answer. That's it for that.
Brian?
Yeah, well, look, let's be clear. We have, we have a childcare crisis in this county in this country for an incredibly long time. We have, pick your number, over 900, over 1,000 kids in the county right now waiting for subsidized care. You know, your question said, Rita, what's the best-case scenario? Well, look, you know, for me, the best-case scenario is the center and the board are able to come back to negotiate, and, and the center finds a way to stay there in a way that's comfortable for the board that they've, that they've adhered to the fiduciary duties that they have as trustees. You know, I, I think the county already is spending about almost a quarter million dollars, $200,000 to help with subsidized care. Our state budget right now is in a deficit. So we, again, need to come together as a county, work with our allies in Sacramento to make sure that our priorities are increased and do not lose. I think the final thing is, as the president of Marin Transit, we're not only moving towards electrification of buses, but we're also bringing childcare slots. We need to encourage companies and partner with them to provide slots for working families.
Thank you. Gabe?
Thanks. So, so for the, you know, the, the center that, you know, is, is, you know, the current topic of discussion, two really important things is I would say, please negotiate. I understand the issue. As, as mayor, we had the same thing with City Hall, a $20 million, $20 million unfunded liability. We wanted to keep it, but, you know, liability and, and exposure are dangerous. As a personal step and as a county supervisor, I would reach out to institutions like the Marin Community Foundation, who possibly may come and fund the project. It's about money. You know, we all know that this is an equity issue. I'm very much in favor of it. More generally, when it comes to childcare, as, as supervisor, I would really look to two key partners, the Marin Childcare Council and First Five. The, the first is a custodian of about $700,000, and I would really look to improve and, and shore up that program as much as possible. And First Five is an amazing partner. They get a quarter million. I would, I'm sure that they continue to get that money and look for every which way to keep opening child centers.
Thank you. Brian?
You know, at the end of the day, this is something that I have been working on for a couple of years directly as a trustee. The number one thing that I really want to push out to everybody, you, you can't negotiate child safety. Okay, I think we all can agree in the community that, that the safety of children is of the utmost importance. And I think that that is being missed in some of this. I think the second thing that we have to recognize is that the stats and the buildings and the fire risk, that, that, that doesn't lie. That is what that is. So if we really care about children, we need to put them in a safe, dry place. The, the, but the P, the key thing here is we have to figure out what we're going to do. Like, what are we going to do now? You know, if, if we really, as a community, value early childhood development like we should, we never should have got here. And if we really, as a community, wanted to step up and solve this problem, we wouldn't be 15 months into it in five years without a lease. We would have had leaders of Fairfax and San Anselmo and the County of Marin and MCOE and all of these leaderships. We would have stepped up a lot earlier. Now we are. I'm hoping we're going to be able to find a solution.
Thank you. Next question. What, in your view, is needed to accommodate the needs of Marin County's immigrant communities more effectively? Brian?
Yeah, well, I, I think, I think we need to provide them with opportunities. You know, opportunities and jobs and training so they can, you know, live a, a life with dignity. I focused in on the area of the canal right now. I know that area is incredibly vulnerable to sea level rise. I know there's a program right now led by the county in San Rafael to address those challenges. As the president of Marin Transit, I'm well aware that the community members in the canal are transit-dependent. So I think it's important that we focus on providing transportation that's reliable, frequent, and safe. I know that the canal community is very interested in development right now of the San Rafael Transit Center and how that will affect their community. So that's another thing I, I've taken a deep and personal interest in. But I think overall in Marin, I think the most important thing we can do is focus on how can we take care of the most vulnerable, those who need the most help? And in doing so, we will focus and aid those in the immigrant community.
Thank you. Gabe?
Yeah, this is a really big topic. Let me see if I can squeeze four big points into 60 seconds. I, I'd say the first for me is policing. I'm a big advocate of RIPA, racial identification profiling, and we did audits of Central Marin. I want to make sure that our immigrant community feels safe. The second really is housing. And, you know, we talked about this earlier, but this is an excellent example where we have to look at different tools, subsidies, safety net, rental protections, affordable housing. Then education's a big one. No one's talked about. We need electricians. We need nurse practitioners. There are a lot of good-paying jobs, and I would love to see our immigrants get on the upward mobility. And I've been talking actively with the College of Marin to develop that pipeline, which will really make our economy more robust. And the last is elder care. It's a real equity issue. Latinos are aging. They're going to be four times as many as now. They are not house-rich or cash-rich on average. We need to look at HHS, our Health and Human Services, and really care for that community.
Thank you. Ryan?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. What, in your view, is needed to accommodate the needs of Marin County's immigrant communities more effectively?
Well, I ran a business in the canal for many, many years, and I became very aware of, of what their needs are. And it really made me upset when COVID hit, and we went to trying to teach children over Zoom and over, and they didn't even have the data set up to receive the, the proper information through the lines. It was just so non, not updated. It, it just showed that we don't value the community the same as we would value our own communities. And so the first part that we have to talk about is making sure that they have opportunity, opportunity to be included, opportunities such as scouting, which brings people together, inclusion in the community so you can actually see them as not a separate community, but part of your bigger Marin community. The other thing that is really important is outreach. This, this community is separated by a freeway, and they almost feel like they're on their own out there, and that's, that's unfortunate. But when this started to be more important, we did start to build the bridges, and we did start to bring them in. The most important thing I can tell you is for allowing belonging, and that's what they needed the most.
Thank you. Heather?
Great. Um, first of all, I want to say that I'm very happy to have this question. I think it's an excellent question to include. Second, I want to say that I am proud to have the endorsement of Omar Carrera, who's the CEO of the Canal Alliance. And I'm also a proud fluent Spanish speaker. I think that the fact that you are including access for this in Spanish, this candidate forum, it's the first one that we've had that has that access, and I'm going to come back to that word, it's access and inclusion. And the areas where there is really critical, and it's been brought up, education is absolutely critical to access and inclusion. Second, on the health front, same front, access and inclusion, having community health in the canal and in areas where there are immigrant communities, super important. Lastly, on affordable housing, this is critical for immigrant communities to have access to affordable housing and things like subsidies, rental subsidies, and access to homeownership. The final two that I want to bring up, because I think I have one minute left, is, or 10 seconds left, is the food insecurity. I have to stop. Okay.
Thank you. More individuals in Marin and the organizations that support them are seeking services and support from the county for mental health, behavioral health, substance use disorders, especially as a result of disruptions from the pandemic. What would you recommend to address these increasing needs? And first, we will ask Gabe.
Thanks, but thanks for that question. I've really made the Health and Human Services a center, center part of my platform. It's one of the reasons I'm running. I started my volunteer life in hospitals. I've had 250 patients as a clinician. I visit the Marin, you know, clinics here. I think this is a hugely important question. I formed a committee of, you know, people who've actually been directors at Health and Human Services and Vivalon, and I'm coming up with a roadmap to answer that question. Briefly, I think one of it is, is information, the concierge system. If you have an issue, dementia, you fell, a hip issue, call the county and see how confusing it is. So I know they're working on it. We've had a Marin Grand Jury report, but that's something I would immediately turn to and try to fix. Secondly, the aging issue is just it's underfunded, and the chain of command and reporting, I would ask the other four supervisors to continue the path of highly prioritizing this. This is tomorrow's problem. Fires, housing floods, that's today's and yesterday's. I really think we need to get ahead of it. And teen drugs is a passion of mine. I would do everything I could to slow that down.
Thank you. Ryan?
Well, I think at the end of the day, to address these needs, we have to actually put it into places why we need to fund these. Most of these services come from funding, and if we don't explain to people, again, it's a communication issue, as to what is the problem and who needs these services, they don't get a priority. It's, it's, it's just like it's not an important issue to most people, so it's not, it's not, it's not funded. Fires obviously noticed. We have smoke days. We recognize these are problems. So what do we do? We put $20 million into a program to, to address it. We have to put a name and a face to these problems so that we can get the support that these services need. People need to be able to pick up a phone or find a way to have a pathway to find the services that they need. And again, that comes with communication and almost like a tree of helps so that people can find the help and the services that they need when they need it.
Thank you. Heather?
Yes, I'm going to start off by saying every family is affected by mental health issues right now. If it's not within their immediate family, then it's definitely within their extended family. And I think what you had mentioned about the pandemic only exacerbated any of the mental health issues that were already going on in our communities. A few areas that I just wanted to highlight, I think schools are doing an excellent job in terms of dealing with mental health and putting health centers on site, specifically at high school levels. I think that's an excellent place to invest resources. And the two areas that I think that haven't been mentioned yet is really looking at families and then seniors. I think those two areas are also good areas of focus. And then finally, I just wanted to bring up, because Gabe brought it up earlier, too. The county response has been criticized in terms of, from a grand jury report, and in terms of the convoluted way to get support services. And I also agree that we definitely need to look at that to make it more streamlined and to make it more user-friendly for our community members.
Thank you, Brian?
Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier, I run a couple of medical practices in San Francisco. So I'm well aware of the mental health challenges that people face. And I have a 13-year-old daughter that's in eighth grade, and I see firsthand with our friends, their families and their kids, you know, the mental crises that our, our kids are having right now. It's incredibly daunting and challenging. I, I think, you know, so much of the county budget, approximately a third, goes to the mental health services. And I, I think a real thing is how many of those dollars are actually going to providing services to those in need it? And how many are, are not being used efficiently or, or used on consultants and are not really making a difference in the lives of the community members that we need? I think that's something that I know I would immediately want to focus on. I think you need to bring the cities and towns into this because they're on the front lines right now. Perhaps the county should sort of step back. Money, the dollars come from the feds and Sacramento. But as I said earlier, the, the cities and towns are on the front line. And then the final thing is Marin has the oldest county in California, and we really just need to use the aging lens on almost everything that we do. You know, how can we help our aging seniors?
Thank you. Well, that was a segue to our next question. As two grand jury reports have stated, the increasing tide of seniors in Marin is about to overwhelm available support services, including provider and caregiving communities. How would you manage this situation before it becomes an even bigger crisis? Ryan?
Well, my mom is in a, I'm proud to say, an assisted living house, home, or a new one over by the Civic Center, and it is fantastic. Let me just tell you, to know that our mom is in a safe place with people of her own age, she's thriving. There's programs there. There's things that make her feel relevant and included, and it gives her a quality of life that when I go in there, it brings me a lot of joy. But I also know that that's not for everybody, and not for everybody because they don't want it, because it's hard to get. It's very expensive to get assisted living, and it's not easy to find. And so when we talk about this affordable housing, it's on all of our minds, and we all talk about housing for seniors. We need a lot of it, and we have to rethink where we're going to put this. If we want to not have to rebuild single-track homes in open spaces, we're going to have to put density, and we're going to need a lot of place for seniors, and we're going to have to rethink how we build our new infrastructure and making sure that we include these seniors, because a lot of them are going to need places to go.
Thank you. Heather?
Yes, another excellent question. So this, the stat that I mentioned earlier is, I think, a really key stat, that just in a few years, by 2027, we'll have more people over 60 than under 30 in this county. Clearly, this is an, an issue that we're going to have to deal with front and center. I think it's an exciting time as well, because there's lots of opportunities of interesting programs that we could invest in. I think a couple of the areas that I did want to highlight, I think we're in a caregiving crisis. I think it's extremely difficult to get caregivers into Marin County, and that has a lot to do with our lack of affordable housing. So that's, that is a really important point to bring up. And then I think the second point that I wanted to bring it up is a lot of seniors are on fixed incomes. So a lot of the renter protections that we talked about earlier are really critical to meet the needs of seniors. And the final area that I want to bring up is about the housing. We do need to think related to ages and stages. We need to think about housing that's going to be able to take our seniors through all the different stages that, that we're going to go through, all of us will be going through. Stop.
Thank you, Brian. And let me know if you want me to reread the question.
Yes, Susan, I would actually appreciate that. Thank you.
As two grand jury reports have stated, the increasing tide of seniors in Marin is about to overwhelm available support services, including provider and caregiving communities. How would you manage this situation before it becomes an even bigger crisis?
Yeah, so I think the first thing we need to do is, I just mentioned at the end of the last question, everything needs to be looked through at the lens of, through the lens of our aging populace, Chairman. I, I think that's the first thing that we need to do, and I'm sort of glad to double down on that. I think the second thing is I'm proud to have gotten the endorsement of SAIU 2015 Long-Term Healthcare Workers, because I know how important they are and how desperately needed they are here in the county. And so we need to figure out how, again, to leverage public private partnerships to make sure that we at a county are working with our partners in Sacramento to support long-term healthcare workers being able to get into the county, and more importantly, be able to live here in the county. I think the other thing is, as I mentioned before, I work in healthcare, so I sort of see the challenges. So again, I think the county can be more efficient, and are So again, I think the county can be more efficient, and are those, is there a customer-centric? Is there a constituent focus in the county on how we can provide communication and more importantly, value-added services to our aging populace now, tomorrow, and into the future?
Thank you. Gabe?
Yeah, I, I really want to take this opportunity to not list the problems, but to give solutions. So, you know, I think the first is to really work on the housing and food security issue. And we've talked about rent control and subsidies, but beyond that, I think the county has a really broken pipeline or one that needs to be improved for both nurse practitioners and IHSS workers. And I think there's a funding request that, that needs to be made, and we need a better partnership with College of Marin and some of the partners to really make sure that, that the care is there. Also, we need a volunteer corps similar to the neighborhood response groups. I would try to organize the seniors right now so that they have some social, you know, connectedness. The aging committees that, that I serve on, I think could be strengthened. They're not adopted in two towns. I would push to make that happen. Also, the 988 system that's run by Buckaloo, I would immediately go to that and see if we could improve that. Like 90% of the calls there can lead to de-escalation if they're properly run. We need some adult daycare programs. The Jewish Family Center had it. I would look for funding right away to get that to happen. More partnership with the Center for Independent Living.
Thank you. We realize these are big questions with one minute, and here's another big question. What do you think are the most important factors involved in reducing homelessness in Marin County? As supervisor, what would be your priority focus areas on this issue? And we are going to start with Heather.
So first off, I agree with our Director of Homelessness that in the county of Marin is that homelessness ultimately is a housing problem. And whenever we have a situation where people are paying more than 30% of their income on housing, we are going to have homelessness. So I guess, you know, at the high level in terms of what we need to do and, and what I think we're doing well, I think the county quite frankly needs to step up in support of our cities. I think more collaboration with our cities is absolutely critical. Number two, I think on the the permanent supportive housing side, which ultimately is where we want to get to, I think the county is doing an excellent job. 94% of people who are housed in permanent supportive housing stay there. I think that's an excellent track record. Where I think we need to put some more emphasis is on the transitional housing or shelter housing. Or they call it the county rapid rehousing. I think we could do a lot more there. And then finally, I'm just going to mention what I talked about earlier in putting some more emphasis on renter, or, I'm sorry, protection, so people don't get into homelessness.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, so I think the first thing is you want to try and keep people housed. So earlier on, I talked about, you know, we, we need to figure out what is a displacement strategy. And far too often, we find in Marin is that when longtime property owners sell their property, that's the point of inflection that rents go up. So I think the county needs to go through its roles and see, look, when are those buildings coming up for sale? And how we can work either with county funds or leverage federal, state, and even private dollars to keep those individuals housed. In San Onofre, we've got innovative housing called the TAM House, right? And we figure out how seniors can group, collect, live collectively. Unfortunately, the state doesn't recognize the non-reader numbers. Again, an opportunity to partner with those folks in Sacramento to get that done. But I think here, people want immediate solutions, and a project like Home Key is, you know, there's a lot of concern about it, understandably. But people want solutions. And I think the real challenge for each of us individually is willing to take a stand and say, you know what? I'm willing to be part of the solution and be open and welcoming to things like that in our own community.
Thank you. Thank you. Gabe, would you like me to reread the question?
No, that's fine. I, I think the first thing is to keep people from becoming homeless. And, you know, I'm on record for trying to take this state 10% increase and bring it down to seven. I think all the, you know, speculation that you've heard so far, you know, we've looked at, and basically, if you don't tighten the safety net with Section 8 housing or with housing funds or a slightly better eviction protection rental cap program, you're going to get more homeless. So that's a starting point. The second is there's transient homeless, and then there's chronic homeless. Transient homeless are like any one of us. You lose your job, and you can get back on your feet. And I look to partnerships with like Community Action Marin, and I've worked with them, and they're running out of money, and I would look to increase their funding. And also the Section 8 housing program to get those people. And then finally, there's the chronic homeless, about 800 of them in Marin. 1251 South Eliseo, I served as mayor. I'll be there tomorrow for the opening. I walk with the people there. That's a great way, the Housing First Program, but let's just remember, that's for those mentally ill, drug addicted. It's really only 500 to 800 people. We need to expand. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. Ryan?
You know, there's a lot of problems here in regards to this issue, but there have to be done with compassion. I mean, this has been broken down by all of my, my fellow candidates, clearly, but I think that we have to talk about it in three phases. There's the mentally ill. And obviously, the mentally ill are really what scares people. They don't know how to address someone who's mentally ill. And that becomes a public safety issue, so it definitely needs to be addressed. The second type of homeless issue that we're dealing with is someone who struggles with drug addiction, and maybe not, maybe isn't interested in finding a home and some services. And the third is the transient housing like Gabe just mentioned, and, you know, people who could just really use a little bit of help, and they wouldn't be there. I think that's where the focus needs to be. I think the real focus is the people who haven't yet really gone to more of a permanent homeless status and getting them opportunities to make sure that they have the ability to not really take that next level down. And then when you do get into the people who are struggling with drugs and, and have addiction problems, that we can set up locations for them to go that have services at these locations in a safe area with sanitation, medical services, misdemeanor services. Yeah, sorry.
Right. Thank you. Marin's growing traffic congestion is created both by county residents and people commuting into the county. What are your suggestions for reducing traffic congestion? And we're going to start with Brian.
I knew it was my turn. Well, you know, people say we have a traffic problem here, and I think that that's fair to say, but I really think that we really have.
They're going to do our order, and it was Brian with a B. Sorry if I wasn't enunciating.
Okay. So I, I think we need to think locally and then regionally about congestion. So locally, I think, I tell people, if you want to understand congestion, try and get back and forth to school. And the day before school, very easy. The day school starts, 25% more congestion. So as I said during one of my earlier priorities, it's important that we improve our infrastructure, that we can figure out how to get our kids back and forth to school in a way that their parents are comfortable. It's going to have benefits not only for school-related congestion, but for everyone in the community. I led a, a study at the hub right now, and it, we get more cars than almost anywhere in Marin, and we focused on not only cars, but immediate solutions, how we can get people to walk and travel safely. I think the other thing is congestion is regional. We all know that we don't have enough housing here, and people come back and forth. I'm incredibly proud of the work I've done with Representative Huffman and Senator Aguirre to work on State Route 37 to adjudicate not only the congestion, but how we can make a real difference in climate change by providing a, a foundation that works for everyone. So I think we need to focus on what we can do here within each of our cities and towns, as I've done at the Chair of TAM, and then regionally.
Thank you. Gabe?
Yeah, I think there, there are few answers. You know, one is, is public transport. You know, that's the simple one. And we've seen COVID, you know, make it much harder. I'm, I serve on the Smart Board. I'm also an alternate on the Transportation Authority Marin, and I've been following that. And I think trying to get more buses and electrified buses is a huge priority and one I would continue to advocate for. Multimodal transportation, we've developed a whole network of bike paths and walking paths. I don't know that that's going to reduce congestion significantly, but that is one thing that we can continue to encourage, especially as Marin ages. You know, people will get out of their cars, so they'll, you know, look for other forms. But a lot of it is economic. It's really, people are driving in. Half of the civic center commutes in from out of the county, and a lot of the workers come from Napa, Sonoma, and from the East Bay. I think that's something that we need to look at economically, and some of it is in housing, our hires, and also developing the economy here. I mentioned the electricians. There are certain things we can do with affordable workforce housing that'll reverse the congestion.
Thank you. Ryan?
Okay, sorry. I think that it's important to recognize that I don't believe we have as much of a traffic problem, although that is very prevalent, but we really have a housing problem. With 67,000 people traveling through Marin County on a commute day, we have to recognize that most of the people that are coming here are servicing our towns as a workforce, or people are actually participating in the events that are happening here. And so although we do have a, a problem with the transportation, we really just have a problem with the housing, because if they didn't have to drive through here, there'd be a lot less people in here. In District Two especially, we have a different problem. We don't have a major 101 coming through here, and we're not going to be widening the roads in between the Marin Art and Garden Center and the Homes in Ross. So really, the problem is, is that we built in a beautiful area, and you can't always upbuild infrastructure to keep, to keep increasing the flow. And part of the problem of living here is the beauty that we have, this is one of the byproducts of it. We have to remember that staggering school start times can also do something about that. And although I love the idea of bikes, and we're a very bike-active community, it doesn't really work when the weather's bad.
Thank you. Heather?
Okay, first, I'm going to have four solutions. I know a lot of them have already been mentioned. One, and I, Ryan and Gabe, I completely agree with you. We need to get affordable housing here to support our workforce, so two-thirds are not commuting in. That's fundamental, first solution. Second, we need to continue to invest in programs to get our students to choose more green travel, walk, ride, or carpool. Safe Roots to School is an excellent program. I'm very involved in it for the last 13 years at Kenfield. And it has been foundational in terms of, we have over 70% of our students choosing green routes to school, which makes a significant impact on the traffic flow in Sir Francis Drake. Third, invest in public transportation and school bus programs like the very successful Ross Valley School District School Bus Line. I think we could do more of that. I wish we had more school bus lines throughout Marin. The last one is investing in an infrastructure to make it safer to walk and ride in our communities. I think all of these together would make a big impact on traffic.
Thank you very much. The 2022-2023 ground grand jury found that climate change, heat waves, atmospheric rivers, electric vehicles, and electrification are all straining our electrical grid. This has led to more brownouts, blackouts, and the loss of cell phone and internet service. What steps do you recommend to significantly reduce such events? Gabe?
Well, I, I think that the grid, you know, so we know we have to go green. And I serve on the Marin Clean Energy Board with, you know, 37 other agencies. And we're looking at alternatives, and there are a few, you know, hurdles here. One is the CPUC, and, and the other is PG&E. And really, you know, developing microgrids, and there have been some examples, you know, we went through this when we had, you know, the really bad fires and the brownouts, and then there was a real push for that. I think we need to continue to develop that resilience and, and also realize that we cannot go green. We cannot achieve the building codes and the transportation, you know, EV charger goals until the grid is right. So it is a number one priority, and it also requires a workforce. We don't have the, the, you know, quite the right people, the electricians, and some of the, you know, specialists and technicians and supplies that will get us there. So I, I would say it is really also a Sacramento issue, and I've worked with CalCities in partnering and, you know, and advocating at the CPUC, and then, and then trying to get MCE to be involved with PG&E better. Thank you.
Ryan?
You know, one of the biggest problems with the green argument, and it's a very good process to be green, we all know it's going there, is that a lot of people across the United States feel as though it's not supportable. So when Gabe talks about the CPUC and the PG&E and the state and the nation, we have to understand that this is something that we need to get to, but we need to get there together. Falling back to the Boy Scout concept, you know, you got to be prepared. Just like you got to find your own evacuation route, and you got to know where you're going. Each family also has to be able to be supporting their own household. I mean, there's a lot we can do at our own base level. We can find power supplies and storage at our own homes, and it's obviously green tech, but it's also not affordable. So we still have the long way to go in order to make this affordable for everybody to get there. But we can't afford to not take these steps for the future of our, of our inheritance for our children and our families. We have to make these steps, but they are expensive, and they're going to take a lot of education and outreach as to why we need to get it done to get there.
Thank you. Heather?
Yes, I think we can all agree at a fundamental level, electrification is the future. We're all moving in that direction. I think what's, everyone has mentioned so far is the transition to get there is the tricky part, the devil's in the details of how to do that. I think the key takeaway is for me, it has to be a collaborative process. And if from an equity standpoint, we cannot leave communities behind during that transition, because it's, that seems to happen a lot here in Marin in terms of some communities are able to go full blaze in terms of electrification, and some just quite frankly can't get there yet. And I think the, the role from a county perspective is how to help all communities. So it's a path that we are all going on together. And that's something I think where we work with state and federal at a federal level to get subsidies and different transition strategies in place.
Thank you. And Brian?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about two solutions that are being implemented right here in Marin County that I'm proud to have been a part of. So my colleagues and I in the San Onofre Council, we're actually putting right now a resiliency hub into effect right now, right now in San Onofre. So I understand that these challenges are, are difficult, but at some point, you just sort of have to acknowledge that climate change is here right now, and we have to show leadership and make the tough decisions. The second is, as a member and now president of the Board of Marin Transit, we are fully focused on electrifying our, our network, and we realize how important that is. And we realize the workforce needs, which is why not only have you brought in a childcare center, we've bought in a training program to provide workforce jobs here in Marin to allow people that are currently working on our diesel-powered buses to work on our electric powered buses. So the, the time is right now. I think the solutions are, are here for us. And if you just show some leadership, we can get it done and provide example for other communities here.
Thank you very much. Our final question is about communication. The Marin Board of Supervisors is charged with being responsive to the needs of county residents, both at the level of District Two and as a potential supervisor representing the whole county as well. How would you propose improving two-way communication with the public? And we're going to start with Ryan.
Well, this is, this is easy. I mean, transparency is the key. I mean, you don't walk into any store or any business or any street corner anymore and not get caught on film. And when you're caught on film, you seem to behave a little better. When we actually went to live cameras in our Fairfax Town Council meetings, the discourse got better. People started listening a little bit more. People started to be a little bit more polite. People recognize that when you are on tape and you are accountable, that transparency actually moves the conversation. And I really think that, that at the end of the day, as public leaders, we really need to bask in the light of transparency. It will set us free. It removes the idea of conspiracy. It allows people to enjoy the process from the privacy of their own homes. And when there is a question mark, they can go back and look at the tape and answer the questions for themselves. The key is being transparent in everything that we do. And the more we do this, the more progress we're going to make, the more people will get together, and they will believe trust will be formed, and progress will be made in a, in a way that really brings us together.
Thank you. Heather?
Excellent question. I think this is critical, a critical role of the Board of Supervisors, and I think, you know, what I see is two things. I, I loved what, what Ryan just said about transparency. I think that's absolutely essential. Transparency is linked to accountability, but I really think where the Board of Supervisors could do a lot more is on the level of engagement, engagement and responsiveness. Those two areas, I think, when I go door-to-door, I hear that over and over again. I want more engagement. I want more responsiveness from my county leaders. Some ways that we can do that, and I know that these are obvious, I think, for a lot of us in this age that we're now in with Zoom. Meetings need to be recorded. They need to be available in Spanish, as you've done with this meeting. This is a great model to how meetings should be run. They need to have access to everyone who wants to get involved. And if you need to go where people are. So if you want to have a meeting to talk about with recent immigrants or with families, go to where those people are. Don't expect people are going to come to a county office during a school day or during a work day. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, I run a couple of medical practices in the city, and our perspective there is always, how can we be patient-focused, right? How can we meet the patient at, at a place for them that's convenient for them to communicate? So transparency is great, except if there's no one at that time to actually get the message. So I think we really need to figure out, we are here in the 21st century. Is the county fully using 21st century tools in a way that's able to, able to gauge with the various stakeholders in the county? And then provide feedback to, well, we've heard your message in a way that works for you, and here's, we're going to iterate our policy or program, and they get back to you, so we're able to communicate for that. I think while the county makes relatively good strides compared to other counties, there's still a sense of frustration in that the county is there's still a sense of frustration in that the county is, is not responsive. And so I just think we simply need to meet our various stakeholders where they are and then demonstrate that we're providing results and then continue to iterate and build upon that.
Thank you. Gabe?
Yeah, I think there's a high-tech side and there's a high-touch side to communication. You know, the high-touch side really, I, I, I'll just piggyback on Ryan and Heather. I think they're spot on. You know, as mayor, I held 40 office hours. That meant at 1:30 you could come to City Hall. The door was open. I didn't care who you were, a donor, endorser, didn't matter, even if you weren't in my district. I would carry that attitude into the Board of Supervisors position. I've canvassed there about 40 neighborhoods in the valley. I've met the key leaders. I would reach out once a month to all 40 neighborhoods and always have the door open to them. That's the high-touch part. The high-tech, I run a software company. Um, I've built the software that the Coast Guard now uses nationally for 20 years. And I know that the county budget, we, well, it's such a boring topic, but 8% of the budget is IT. One of the first things I would do, and I have a very specific vision about their work plans, is to go into IT and take projects like the Office of Disaster Preparedness, NYXL and Alert Marin and the 988 Buckaloo System and really bring those, bring us into the 21st century for being in touch with our residents.
Thank you very much. So that concludes, um, the question portion. Thank you, candidates. You made it through 12 questions. Um, before the candidates make their closing statements, I'm going to share some key election information because the election's coming up soon. So slide one, please. Ballots are going to be mailed starting February 5th. And right after that, official ballot drop boxes will be available if you want to vote right away. If you prefer to vote in person, the vote centers start opening February 24th and all will be open by March 2nd. March 5th is election day. So that's the last day to vote. All vote centers will be open until 8:00 PM. Or if you choose to mail your ballot, it's gotta be postmarked by March 5th. Or if you choose to put it in a Dropbox, those will also be available to 8:00 PM. Very, very important. If you're choosing to do the mail or the Dropbox, sign your ballot. Otherwise it can't be, um, counted. And if you weren't already registered, February 20th is the last day to register if you're, to vote online, if you're using online registration. Next slide, please. We're, um, also posting this information for our Spanish listeners. And if you happen to be doing voter outreach with anybody who's working with Spanish speaking voters, take a screenshot, share it with them. All right. Also, we want to bring to your attention some, uh, helpful, uh, resources for voter education. Um, of course, we'd like to send you to the Marin League of Women Voters, uh, website where you find this recording and other helpful information, um, at MarinLWV.org. Another helpful, uh, resource from the League of Women Voters is Vote411.org. It's an online tool that provides information about what's on your ballot. Put in your address and up comes everything that's gonna be on your ballot, including, um, informations from candidates who have entered their information, um, uh, their biographies, top priorities. You'll also see information about local ballot measures and more in English and Spanish. Those of you who might have been using Voter's Edge, it is now Vote411.org. And we'll bring this slide up again at the end of the form if you want to take more notes. Thank you. We can take the slide down. And now the candidates are going to be invited to make their closing statements. They'll have two minutes each and we're gonna go in reverse order from the, um, opening statements. And that means we're going to start with Gabe.
Thank you, Susan. And I, I want to thank everybody. I also want to thank the other three candidates. I really feel like I'm with an excellent crew. And by being respectful to each other, I think we're really being respectful to the voters. We really want you to make a good choice and know who we are. Um, so with three good candidates, you have to imagine I have, had to have a really good reason to run. And I believe that what I have is a set of experiences and a vision and a plan that's unique. Um, I, I have worked an awful lot in housing. Uh, we've talked about this issue, but I encourage you to look at the record. Uh, you know, just look me up in the IJ or go to my website. And the, the different portfolio of trying to develop housing in the right locations with the right design and, you know, that'll suit our transit needs is something that I spent a year on and I've studied the San Anselmo housing element. I understand the Fairfax and the accounting housing element. Also, we really need to build a better safety net while we get there. So I'm on the ballot, Measure D now. I'm actively working on that. And I've tried to, you know, work on subsidy programs over the course of four years. So housing has been a center point. For disaster preparedness, I'm on Flood Zone 9. I'm on the Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency. I tried to be specific with you. I have a very detailed vision of how we can move forward with Flood Zone 9 and I'd love to discuss that more at any opportunity. Um, with the Aging and Health and Human Services, this is a passion of mine. I've, I've been dealing this in, in my family with my 93-year-old mom. It's something that I think is so important for the county. I have a vision where Marin can be a model, we're the oldest county in California. We can be a model to California and to the world where people have a wonderful equitable health span, not just a lifespan, but this will require policy details, vision and leadership. And that is my emphasis. That is my strength. And the same is for the young, the first five programs, the teens that are drug addicted. I've been involved four years really trying to slow down the double use. Anyway, I hope I own, earn your vote and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. So next up is Ryan.
Yeah, I thank you. So my personal and world experiences drive my understanding. In many ways, Marin is a bubble. The world is changing and I'm committing to execute uh, local solutions and building the regional alliances and finding solutions that we need to combat the issues our district and county face. Um, issues such as wildfire prevention suppression, climate change, sea level rise, issues related to aging, helping our working class and addressing the challenges facing our youth. Um, I've demonstrated an ability within Marin and outside of Marin to work regionally uh, at the Transportation Authority Marin, Marin Transit and with Representative Jared Huffman and Senator McGuire on projects like State Route 37. More importantly, here at home, I've done the work in San Anselmo. I encourage any and all of you to come and see our community vitality downtown, particularly on a Friday and Saturday night, where you can see our family-friendly atmosphere and family to me means everyone, neighbors, not just our immediate family members. I believe I am the most experienced in working with the community and putting forward solutions. I've been endorsed by a hundred of community members and I'm proud to have the endorsement of the Marin Professional Firefighters, SEIU 2015, the Long Care Health Workers, Supervisor Katie Rice, Supervisor Stephanie Moulton Peters, Supervisor Eric Lucan, Assembly Member Damon Conley, Mayor Kate Conner San Rafael and my colleague Steve Burdo. Thank you for watching.
Thank you very much. Heather?
Great. So as I've spent time with residents over the last several months, I've heard over and over a frustration with transparency, accountability and inclusion. While challenges like housing affordability, climate change, wildfire prevention, homelessness, racial equity and traffic exist, I see a vibrant future for Marin. I grew up in Marin in the seventies. The kids I played with were the children of teachers, firefighters, plumbers and small business owners. I loved my childhood. Our local community was close knit, neighbors looked out for each other and most people lived and worked in the county. Marin is now at an inflection point. I continue to be optimistic that with the right leadership, we can create a healthier and more equitable community. Housing is a central topic, but our issues actually run deeper. We are not individual neighborhoods, towns, cities or districts, but a community that relies on one another, traveling a shared path. Community engagement has never been more important in Marin and by tackling our issues as a community, we will be stronger for it. My four campaign priorities are to, one, pursue a spectrum of housing strategies that support Marin's character. Two, prepare for the consequences of climate change in Marin with flood control, wildfire preparedness and prevention and sustainable transportation initiatives. Three, ensure vigilant transparency, accountability and fiscal oversight of our public funds. And four, be responsive with ongoing community engagement, outreach and communication. My door will always be open. I welcome collaboration and different perspectives. I'm honored to have the endorsement of Planned Parenthood, the Marin Women's Political Action Committee, the North Bay Labor Council, the Marin Association of Public Employees, representing 1,300 workers, SEIU 2015 and 500 plus community members. I would be honored to earn your vote. Thank you again for your time tonight.
Thank you. Ryan?
You know, I was gonna sit here and read off the speech and then I just realized it's more authentic to be authentic. And on all these issues that we're talking about, about fire and flood and homelessness and housing, they're all very important. But what we really need now is leadership. And it's something that I really understand. And the difference between the leadership that I see today brings me back to why I got involved in this in the first place. I never woke up and decided I should be supervisor. I just got angry when I saw bad leadership and bad leadership doesn't come with bad intentions. It just means you're not able to move the pile. And it reminds me when I first moved into town in Fairfax over 20 years ago and used to sit down every month with Hal Brown, former supervisor Hal Brown. And he'd have a Coke and a cigarette and I would sit there and I'd listen to him and he'd say, you know, Ryan, I have some money for your open space committee or something. Aren't you gonna ask me for anything? And it occurred to me, what I really wanted to know from Hal was how he got elected for almost 30 years with 85% of the vote and had to tell 50% of the people no every time he voted. And he sat back and he told me, good question. And this is what he told me. He said, the night before he really comes down on a big vote, he makes a call to the side that's not gonna be in favor of the vote. And he tells them where he's gonna land. And he said, something special happens. They get the opportunity, Ryan, to come back to the table and put their feet down. And you know what's most important about that is you need those people there because tomorrow, you gotta do it again, Ryan. You gotta do it again on a whole new issue and you need the 49% on the other side to be at the table. It's all we have to do now. We have to take everyone in the community. We have to outreach. We have to yell. We have to put mailers. We have to tell them the importance of the issue and we have to teach them who it, who it is about. And then we gotta bring them all to the table and you take the 10% from the right who aren't gonna solve the solution and tell them not to be involved, but stay tuned. You take the 10% from the left and you tell them to go home, but stay involved, but not for this time. And with the 80% of the people, you really gotta listen. And you really gotta put yourself in their shoes. Cause we as a community really have to solve these problems and we can only do it if we listen and work together. Thank you. I appreciate your vote.
I want to thank all four of the candidates for their, um, active participation this evening and to the league forum team who is working behind the scenes. And special thanks to our partners at Community Media Center of Marin and our Spanish language interpreters, Annabelle and Karina. A video of tonight's forum will be posted at the, uh, uh, MarinLWV.org and in the next few days. And we've had an excellent turnout tonight. I want to thank everybody who hung in there for a long, um, uh, forum of excellent information, uh, on a rainy night. So thank you all for joining us. Thank you, candidates. And most important, thank you everyone for voting. And we're gonna bring up that information slide with, um, the voter education resources um, so that people can see that if they want. And thank you again. Okay. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.